This board meeting, this meeting of the Board of Trustees is being held Tuesday, June the first. The meeting is being called in order at the time of 5:30. Everyone, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's proceed to item three, new business. Item A, presentation of S R three, elementary and secondary schools, emergency relief funding. So Socorro ISD eligible for elementary, secondary education.
Excuse me, David.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. I went, I jumped ahead. New business, item three. A, consider approval of interim superintendent Marta Carmona and terms of the employment. Our presenter, Steve Blanco.
Thank you, Board President Morales, members of the board, and Ms. Carmona, welcome.
Thank you.
The Board President was authorized at our last board meeting to contact Ms. Marta Carmona to offer her the position of acting or interim superintendent. You all in closed session at the last meeting gave President Morales a range of benefits and pay. He met with Ms. Carmona and they were able to reach an agreement which we have reduced to writing. Ms. Carmona has accepted the terms. The structure is going to be as follows. There will be an additional stipend paid to Ms. Carmona for her duties as acting superintendent. This will be in addition to her current contract and pay level as the internal auditor for curriculum instruction, although the stipend is separate from that contract. The additional amount of the stipend will be $391.84 per day. That will be added to her current daily rate. The current daily rate is $488.69. In addition, two additional benefits were included in the agreement. One was an increase in the employee's cellphone stipend, which is currently at $50 a month. It will be raised to $75 per month. The second is an increase in the employee's travel stipend, which currently is $174 a month, and that will be increased to $250 per month. All other benefits in terms of Ms. Carmona's current contract will stay the same. This additional supplemental duty agreement will be for the stipend and for those additional benefits only. It's within the range of the authority that you granted to Mr. Morales. Ms. Carmona has accepted. Thank you. And so we're asking the Board to confirm and approve the agreement that Ms. Carmona has agreed to sign and Mr. Morales has agreed to sign.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion was made by Mr. Paul Guerra.
No.
I'm sorry. Oh, sorry. By Mr. Eddie Mena and a second by Cynthia Nahara. To approve this item is presented. Any further discussion?
Just one question. Mr. Blanco, I've received calls about the compensation for Ms. Carmona. If you can explain the methodologies, because you know, it's the jump in pay from where she was at to where she's going to now without any experience in the assistant superintendent. So we can just explain that.
Sure. So the additional work that Ms. Carmona will be required to perform as superintendent is rather significant. There are generally two options, as we discussed, would be to hire somebody from the outside who is not already an employee as Ms. Carmona currently is for Socorro, bring them in as a new superintendent. You would be paying a salary, just an estimate, but it's a good estimate that would be in excess of what Ms. Carmona has agreed to, and the Board had a discussion about that at the last meeting, which option was better. The Board chose to go with an internal candidate, which is Ms. Carmona. She is accepting this additional role as acting superintendent and still being required to perform her duties as the internal auditor of curriculum instruction. I'll leave that to her to decide how she's going to handle all that, but she can definitely do it. So the pay increase is to account for the additional time, effort, labor, and work as the acting superintendent. That amount is slightly less than her current pay level as an auditor of curriculum and instruction, plus the two additional benefits. I can generally say, compared to other interim superintendent, acting superintendent, pay levels for a district this size, the negotiated amount is well within a reasonable range.
And one more question that was brought to my attention, constituents, is there a timeline set yet for picking a new superintendent?
Generally, it's six to six months as a minimum and up to, I would say, less than a year.
Okay.
It's just a general.
And the initial announcement to start, has that been determined?
Yes, it was determined. It was actually last week on the 25th.
Okay.
And when is that going to be?
Question?
When exactly will the public or we know when we're going to start looking?
As soon as we come together and discuss it as a Board, we'll have to have it as a agenda item.
So the, that's correct. So the next regular board meeting, we had discussed the last meeting, posting an item on there to decide how you want to go with a selection firm, whether it's going to be Tasby or one of the various firms that we've discussed that offer those services to select the superintendent. That you'll have to pick. Then that will go out and they will start the recruitment process, but it should take about six months.
Are there any further questions? We had a, we had a motion already by Mr. Mena and a second by Cynthia Nahara. Just to refresh, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blanco. Our next item, our board workshop, which I happen to jump ahead. I apologize for that. We've got item A, a presentation of the S R three, elementary and secondary school emergency relief funding. Socorro ISD is eligible for elementary, secondary education relief funding and is known as S R three, and the submitted documents will provide a summary of its main points to the Board of Trustees. Our presenters are Ms. Lucy Borrego and Dr. Starkey.
Good evening. Good evening, President Morales, Ms. Carmona, members of the Board. Today, I have the honor of starting the presentation today for S R three, and we all hear about that, and everybody loves S R three because it is tied to a lot of money and a lot of funding. But as we know, with federal funding, we have, there are stipulations on how that money could be spent, and we are very, I call it blessed, lucky, very fortunate to have an amazing person on our team here in Socorro ISD. It's Dr. Adam Starkey. He is in charge of state and federal programs, and for those of you that know him, they, you know that he is meticulous when it comes to compliance. He is meticulous when it comes to money and making sure that we are in compliance with everything that we do. He handles all the Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV, and that'll come a different day. But he has done, he has worked in collaboration with finance and other teams and myself to put together this grant because we had to apply for S R, and he's going to talk today about this presentation and give us an overview. And then you'll be able to ask some questions, if you have any, at the end of the presentation as we go through it. I think that you're going to enjoy the presentation because he is very clear and concise, and really, I call him the in-house genius. He truly is a genius. He's a hard worker. He's very dedicated, and I'm very, I'm very, I feel very lucky to have him as part of my team. So with that being said, Mr. Dr. Starkey will start with the S R three general information and then go through the different slides in the PowerPoint. Thank you.
Good evening, President Morales, members of the Board and Mrs. Carmona. Also like to thank my wonderful boss, Ms. Borrego, for those wonderful things that she always says. I kind of turn red whenever she says it, but I'm not going to lie to anybody that I never get tired of it. Congratulations to those of you all who were recently elected, also recently appointed, and for those of you all that I've seen through the years I've been here already. Right? We are going to go ahead and, as Ms. Borrego said, we are going to go ahead and talk about the S R three overview. Before I flip the slide, ladies and gentlemen, one of the things that I do want to say is that our planning process is in flux right now. We were made aware on about April 29th, on or about April 29th, that we would be receiving the S R three funding. Since then, we have had some meetings. We are going to have some more. We have looked at some introductory planning, and we are going to get more specific. One of the things that I do want to say is that we will be back here on the 20th of July because that is when we intend to do the public hearing in which the plan will be more detailed. But what I always say is you don't want to come to a party and not bring anything. Nobody likes that guy, you know? Nobody likes that lady. So we had to kind of start with something where we, where we talk about what we're going, what's allowable, and what the general overarching themes that we feel are needs, and then have an opportunity for you all to ask questions that you may have as stakeholders of our school district, very big stakeholders, I might add. So first, we have our general information. S R three is the education funding in President Biden's American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. He signed that in March. Okay? S R means elementary and secondary schools emergency relief. S R one was awarded in early fall 2020. Now, for those of you all who may be fans of Star Wars, like I am, you might say, okay, we have S R one, and now we have S R three. Well, what happened to S R two? Why is there a break? I mean, we know in Star Wars, Episode Four was the first one that came out, right? Okay? So the main thing is that in S R, in S R two, we don't have it yet. Okay? It was signed by a different president, okay? I'm not going to sit here and say that that was his fault or someone else's, but the way that it was written is that there were different stipulations in it, and our state legislature, who's made national news recently, is kind of basically jamming S R two up. We haven't gotten the funding to us yet. But S R three has different language in it, has different mandates federally, which has allowed it to flow to us and allowed us to be able to receive it. Now, back with S R one, last year in August, we had a public hearing on that and we applied. It wasn't supplemental like this. What happened was that our foundation school program with general funding was reduced by the state, and then the S R one was used as an offset. And so what we had to do with it was not only use it as an offset, but use it for COVID-related expenses. So it was not, it was supposed to be supplemental, but the legislature supplanted it. In this case, they weren't allowed to do that, and that's what makes three different. Okay? So the intent or purpose of S R three is to help safely reopen and sustain the safe operation of schools and to address the impact of the coronavirus pandemic on students. The eligible S R three funding amount for Socorro Independent School District is the total there, $99,236,903 over a life of three years, which means that it is going to be good through the 2023, 2024 school year. So we will have three-year plan that we need to ensure that we finalize and develop and bring to public hearing by that time. What is really important, and Ms. Borrego mentioned this, and this is a good place to kind of come back into that realm, it's a lot of money, and we know that, and there's quite a bit of range of things that can be done with it, but S R allowable expenditures must be proven to be needs resulting from the COVID-19 pandemic. In other words, pandemic fallout. We have so many things that as we emerge from this that have to be addressed, and it's, before, it was more like we were all on guard, just fighting it and dealing with it. And now, as everyone gets back into school and we try to return to a semblance of normalcy, this is meant to pick up the pieces, to kind of put, to be able to put it back together. So I wanted to go and talk about some fiscal things a little bit. Maintenance of effort is important because there isn't a maintenance of effort required under S R three, but ESSA, which is the other title funds, and then IDEA, which is our special education federal money, do have maintenance of effort. So what we want to make sure that we do is that we supplement with S R as much as possible. Like, we don't want to reduce ESSA expenditures. We don't want to reduce IDEA expenditures. We also don't want to reduce state and local expenditures because although I don't have that there, that plays into the ESSA maintenance of effort. And I don't know, I always will go tell Ms. Borrego about it, but really, the people that sit on pins and needles to wait and see we comply is this gentleman that's sitting over here and me. We always want to make sure that we're compliant in that. So what we want to make sure that we do is not supplant too much. We want to make sure that we supplement as much as possible. We also have something that I wanted to go over called maintenance of equity. In no grant, okay? I've been doing administration for quite a few years, and I've never seen this before. It's brand new. There's something called maintenance of equity that is in S R three. It's not in S R two, if that ever comes, and it wasn't in S R one. It also doesn't exist in title federal funding either, although we do try to be equitable with all of our students, with our allotments. But one of the things with S R three is what they're saying is, when you're using it, you can't start reducing per pupil spending or full-time equivalent positions from high-poverty schools. Okay? So the top quartile is what they're looking at. One of the things that's difficult about this is that the USDE keeps saying that they're going to tell us something about maintenance of equity, and they say, oh, that'll be out next week. Oh, that'll be out next week. You know, it's like when I used to play golf at Vista Hills, there was one hole where it said free hamburgers tomorrow only, you know, every time I made, every time I went up there. So, so there was just, so it's just kind of a thing where I'm still trying to wait for things to find out about that. I feel like I'm, I'm going to get really old before they tell us, but if they ever do, I'll communicate it. It's just a matter of not reducing funding and not taking away diverting general funds. They want to make sure that the schools that are more disadvantaged don't suffer from that because of this, because this does have a finite three-year time. We can get into more of that later in the public hearing, I hope, right? Free hamburgers tomorrow. Okay? S R three mandates, big thing right here, mandates that a minimum of 20% of the award must be expended to address learning loss and ensuring that interventions are tailored to students' academic and social emotional needs. Academic, it's pretty common, that's pretty understandable, you know, learning loss. Social emotional is another big one. We'll get into that in a little bit. S R three says you have to do this. S R one obviously didn't say that. S R two actually doesn't say that, if it ever comes. S R three does. It's important, we wanted to make sure that we were transparent and talk about what we have done so far and what we will be doing as far as taking consultation with a variety of stakeholders, okay? And again, as I said, this Board and superintendent are stakeholders, okay? So we are here today doing that. We had a principals' meeting and a directors' meeting. We had our EPAC, which is our district-wide educator advisory committee. That's a very diverse group of individuals. We're here today. We're going to do our parent and student advisory council meetings tomorrow. And something else, the principals and department supervisors are getting feedback for us, and they're sending that back to the assistant superintendents and to, to their chief officers, so we can get some more on that. Another thing that I do think is important that I don't have up there that I'd like to also communicate is that, it's going to be there in a minute, but Mrs. Macias is heading up the part of this that has to do with the back-to-school plan, and I know that you all are probably aware of some of those meetings that we've been having. So that's another place where it, we've been reaching out to a lot of people, and, and this is part of it also, you know, like talking about the learning loss and other things to that effect. So we were, I've mentioned the public hearing already. That will be when, that's scheduled, we want to make sure that that's on July 20th so we can get that together and then submit the application immediately thereafter, and we will have the full plan by that time, and then the public will have an opportunity to provide input on that, making sure that everyone knows what is to be submitted in the application. Mentioned the Safe Return to In-Person Instruction and Continuity of Services Plan. That is required in S R three, and we are fast at work doing that. Mrs. Macias is leading the charge, and just about all of us that you see circling this room, we're attending those meetings and answering questions as needed. And for further transparency, both of the plans, the S R eventual plan and the Safe to Return to In-Person Instruction and Continuity of Service Plan, the back-to-school plan, must be posted on the district's website within 30 days of receiving the notice of grant award. However, once we complete the plans, we'll go ahead and get it put up there, you know, and make sure that it's ready to go. I mean, because we, we always try to move a little bit quicker if we can get things done. Okay? Again, we've come up with four categories that we've looked at in terms of general overarching themes that we are looking at where different things below those can be used to, for S R three to benefit children in the best ways possible for all of our students here. So we have four categories, and I do want to stress that this is only a draft, that this is in development, but this is kind of where we're trying to go. We're looking at accelerated learning, wraparound services, infrastructure, and technology as a start. When we talk about accelerated learning, what we want to remember is that expenditures in category one must be equal to or greater than 20% of the total grant award to address learning loss. So what could accelerated learning look like? We could talk about more teachers for class size reduction. We could talk about more teaching assistance. We could talk about, a big one is the high dosage tutoring, extra year, extra intercession time after school, Saturdays, summertime, and really get that, get that there to continue to close gaps. We look at things like that. A big question that has come out recently because of a major bill called HB 1468 that's going through the legislature is about whether virtual school is continued to be allowed. If the governor signs that, we're going to look at that and see if it is reasonable and necessary and see if there's a demand for it. And we have to look and see once, it's expected that he may eventually sign it, and we would have to look and see how that would play in or not. Category two, we're talking about wraparound services, and a moment ago, we talked about academic plus social emotional needs of students. With the wraparound services, we're talking about a lot of the social emotional needs plus safety needs. Because one of the things is, as we continue to strive to pull through this, we still continue to have the social emotional certainly there, and we still have a need for safety. It's, we're not quite out of the woods yet. It's something that we would still have to have in the front of our minds. So here, we would be looking at perhaps additional counselors, perhaps additional social workers. There's lots of things they can help with, you know, the fallout that's happened with this. I mean, I can tell you, I have a daughter that just finished ninth grade at Pebble Hills High School, and I sent her back into the building because she was just going off the wall. I mean, she just couldn't stay in the house anymore, you know? And I think that a lot of kids may feel that way. They, there may be some grief from this if they've lost someone, things like that. Social workers, it's also trying to get kids re-engaged, right? We can look at those that have had difficulty with attendance and making sure that they're back and other things, you know, re-engagement, or if they're at risk for a variety of reasons, we can continue to supplement what we already have and wrap that around even more. Then we also can talk about nurses, nurse assistants, right? Right now, the nurses really do put in their time. The nurse assistants do too. Do we need more? It's possible. And I also said that, another thing I've said as I present this, is they're pretty good at social emotional learning too. They're the ones that'll kind of patch you, you know? I was at the doctor the other day. They hate, I hate needles. They comforted me pretty well. Good SEL stuff right there. Okay? So we're looking at that. And then another thing that we've kind of talked about is, is child nutrition. Do we need to expand that because of the safety? It's not set in stone, but possible. I mean, you might need more people, you know, to properly serve and, you know, have distancing, things like that. Then we have category three. We have the infrastructure. Okay? Now, I want to make clear that all of this comes back to our children. And, I mean, as I said, I have a child who comes here. I've been a taxpayer in this school district since 2003. Every single kid is ours. We treat them all as our own. We kind of had the first two parts that really are directly there, but the infrastructure also is for them. The reason I said that is because I've always voted for every bond. We've got great infrastructure. We've got each, great HVAC systems. We've got great facilities, all that stuff. You know, I'm proud to be an employee, proud to send my kid here, all of that. But you know, pandemics don't, I mean, you know, you can't negotiate with something like that that happens. So another thing we're looking at is, are we possibly going to need any kind of new upgrades to our HVAC systems to keep our children and our teachers and staff safe while they're, and others, while they're in the buildings? Is that a possibility? Another thing is that we have these, you know, most water fountains are, nobody ever thought, why, why not just buy the conventional ones? Now you're thinking of these ones that are like touchless and all these other things like that. You know, it's like, do we need to replace some of those for the safety of our children? Perhaps that's a possibility. Another thing, PPE, which, you know, I remember when people first started talking about that, I couldn't get my head around that. Now I know, personal protective equipment. Okay, it's become commonplace. We're probably still going to need some, and we can use this to do that. There's going to be some, some places where people may still want to be shielded or where people may still want to be masked even by their own request. Also, perhaps some extra custodians may be needed, perhaps some extra monitors, and we have them under infrastructure because of the function where they're coded, you know, for kind of the outdoor things, like as we sort of return to recess. So we're sort of looking at that. Some personnel and then some extra things structuring, you know, the buildings, looking at assessing those. Mr. Iyington probably knows that better than I do, but I've tried real hard to study up, you know, try to have that on there. And then category four is the final one, and that centers where we look at technology. Now, one of the things that's very true is that through varieties of funding that we've been able to leverage in this past year, we did buy a lot of technology. We really did. And we made sure that there were existing devices. Then we started to supplement those for the, that didn't have it. But then the question is like, wow, that's a huge asset inventory that we've got now. And the other thing that is also a good point is that one of the things that's been said by our assistant superintendents, and another thing is Ms. Borrego always talks about this. I've also heard our other assistant superintendents say this, that technology has always been a tool. And, and from when we go back, we are assuring everyone that we have no desire to leave kids in front of a computer. Now, we tried with the asynchronous plan to make sure that that didn't happen, but we're trying to make sure that it's something that's supplemental and that they wouldn't just have it out all the time and what have you. But there is something that changed though, ladies and gentlemen, and that is that people got better at using technology than they ever did before. Kids did. Teachers did. Other staff did. And it will probably be more greatly integrated into instructional activities than perhaps it was before. So even if it is not the primary where they're learning at home, it, it will probably be even more integrated than what we found, especially since everyone is one-to-one. So when we look at this, we're, we're looking forward and saying, how are we going to maintain all of these assets that we have now? Do we need more technician support to help us to do that? Do we need, do we need more types of maybe infrastructure, even though Do we need, do we need more types of maybe infrastructure, even though that's more Category Three, but as far as technology, do we need to upgrade our web systems because of the number that are being used? Do we need to have our bandwidth go up? All of that would be pandemic fallout, you know, and we would look at that as a possibility. Okay? So currently identified categories address many allowable activities right now in an overarching basis, and activities within the four categories would begin to be undertaken as immediately as possible when, once we get the application submitted and the grant awarded. Some can be accomplished starting pretty quickly, almost all of them can find a way to be started, but some of them will go a little bit longer. You know, the learning loss is going to take longer than a year, we will be working on that. Social emotional learning, I mean, I'm sorry, can do, you know, their needs could take longer than a year. And that's a good thing that we have the three-year period for that. Okay? And so again, this is an overview, and I thank you all for listening and thank you all for your time. And I do promise that we will have this more in detail when we are ready to finalize, but I will entertain any questions that you may have at this time.
The, four categories are defined by the SER III?
They are not, sir, there are several activities that are in statute. Yeah, the first one is defined, the other three are defined generally within the statute, and we kind of integrated them together to make a more summarized type plan.
Okay, so it, you can add another category theoretically later if you identify a problem or something that needs to be addressed?
Sure, as long as it is allowable in the statute, of course, we could, yes.
Okay, the other question, one more question. One of the things that keep coming up is salaries. Can that be addressed in this plan, or?
Well, when we look at salaries, there's different types of those. If we look at new positions that might be needed, those are allowable, that's something that we're looking at right now. As far as existing salaries, that could also be done, although the idea would be more to supplement. There, for the things that are allowable, we are looking at extra, at extra positions, supplemental positions to address the pandemic fallout needs, I hope I'm answering properly.
Yes, it was locked in before, it was only to address the COVID, but you said it can also address existing salaries, and I think you brought it in there.
Well, yes, as long as, as long as it's tied to the pandemic.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
If there aren't any further questions, any other questions? We're going to go ahead and move to the next item on the agenda. Item B.
Thank you.
Presentation of FY 2021-2022 Revenue Estimates and Preliminary Budget. Administration will provide a presentation for the Board of Trustees. Presenter, Mr. Tony Ariza.
Yes. President Morales, interim superintendent Carmona, members of the board. Tonight, we finish our series of budget workshops for the purpose of adopting the budget for the 2122 fiscal year for the Socorro Independent School District. And we'll also get our first glimpse at the prospective tax rate that supports the budget. Before I get started, I do like to introduce, I do want to introduce my budget director, this is Susan Olson, I want to thank her, her and her staff for the work. I have her here in case there's any questions with respect to the budget that I perhaps cannot answer at this time. So let's go over the agenda, we'll discuss the legislative updates, I'll go very quickly over that, I'm not going to spend too much time with that. We'll discuss the, or go over the budget for the General Fund, the Child Nutrition Program, and the Debt Service. Those are the three funds this board has to adopt by fund and by function. And I'll kind of show what I'm talking about a little bit later. We'll review the components of the district's tax rate, we'll look at the, we'll give a comparison history of the district's tax rate, we'll review the public notice to be published, not the whole notice, but a certain section that I want to go over with the board. And we'll look at the budget and the property tax rate adoption timeline. With respect to the legislative update, very quickly, the session did end yesterday. I just want to mention one bill, House Bill Three, that's the cleanup bill. A couple of things that were included in that bill that were both approved by the Senate and the House before the House left, was fast growth provision, funds for incremental growth beyond $250, $250 students for fast-growing school districts. They made changes to the Career Technology Education Funding Formula by using various weights for different courses. They also made sure that the teacher incentive allotment was eligible for the Teacher Retirement Service Credit, that wasn't there before. Also, just want to mention that Governor Abbott has called or talked about calling a special session in the fall to review and allocate the use of $16 billion in federal funds as well as for redistricting. And given the fact that the Democrats left the House, he might call this session earlier. Usually, when you look at a special session, it's usually done in the summer for a month's period of time. I think the reason they're calling this in the fall is because of the fact that they're waiting for census datas to be able to do the redistricting plans for the, for the, for the next 10 years. So we'll see, we'll see what happens with respect to when that special session is actually taking place. In the budget, we have currently, what we have is our budget drivers that we're going to ask the board to adopt on June 15th, is a commensurate general pay increase of 4% for teachers, nurses, librarians, counselors, and for all other job classes. We have a lump sum payment of $1,000 for all eligible employees. We have additional secondary instructional positions due to projected growth in those secondary campuses, as well as dual language. We have additional instructional positions for special education. We have funding to increase the number of three-year-old half-day pre-kindergarten classes at various campuses. We have funding to provide laptops for the incoming freshman class, as well as funding to cover increases in property insurance and utilities. Now, this is the budget, and this is the format that the board is going to adopt the budget. By statute, you have to adopt it in this way. You have to adopt it by fund, that's the General Fund, the Child Nutrition, the Debt Service, and this is the total amount, and you have to adopt it by function. When I'm talking about function, I'm talking about instruction, I'm talking about library, I'm talking about staff development, that's how you adopt it. So just for the information for the, for the board, just keep in mind that if we make, I'm sorry, if we make a adjustment within instruction, if we make a transfer between, let's say instructional contracted services and instructional technology, that doesn't go before the board, because the board has already adopted this lump sum amount. However, if we make a transfer, or what we call an amendment, from instruction into, let's say, staff development, that doesn't come before the board for approval, that's an amendment. And it doesn't matter, it's just these funds, it's all funds, we're talking about Title One, Title Two, Title Three, everything that changes functions comes to the board for approval. But this is how the board's going to adopt it on June 15th. Now, I'm going to go over the notice, it's going to get published on Thursday, and so we have to publish that notice 10 days prior to a public hearing that we're going to have on June 15th. On June 15th, I'll conduct pretty much the same information that I've given you today, a little bit more, and we allow the public to provide you, the board members, input on the budget and the proposed tax rate. So I just want to make sure that you're aware of that. So this is our budget for the General Fund, we're looking at $460.2 million. For the Child Nutrition, $32.8 million, and for our Debt Service, which is the district's mortgage, $62.8 million, for a total of $555,910,601. That's the budget. Now, we are making some slight changes, we might make a little bit of a change on the fringes, shouldn't be more than maybe, I don't know, 50, maybe $100,000, but this, pretty much, this budget is set. Now, with respect to the revenues, to support this, this budget, you're looking at, for the General Fund, we're looking at $451.5 million in revenue, we're looking for Child Nutrition, $32.2, and Debt Service, $62.8, for a total of $546 million. So what we're looking at is using $8.6 million of fund balance to balance the General Fund budget, we're looking at $632,000 to budget, to balance the Child Nutrition, and we have a small surplus in the Debt Service. That's the revenue. And I want to emphasize, these are estimates, because we're always getting updated information on property values, and I'll go over that a little bit later, as well as ADA, average daily attendance, because we project what we're going to earn in state funding based on our attendance, but we have to earn it throughout the whole year, and so it's always changing. Now, with respect to, so we give you a budget book, so a little bit later, if you have any questions in that book, feel free to ask questions, and I have Susan here to answer if I can't answer any questions that you might have. Now, let's talk about the tax rate that we're going to publish. First of all, I want to just provide some information for the board and the community as to the tax rate and what it's composed of. Our tax rate, our total tax rate is composed of two parts, we're talking about the maintenance and operations, what we call the MNO tax rate, and that is used to fund the day-to-day operations of the school district, the General Fund, and that is for salaries, benefits, supplies, equipment. Now, there is a legal limit to this part of the tax rate. That legal limit is the maximum compressed tax rate plus 17 cents. So for MNO, it's MCR plus 17 cents, that's the total that you can, that can go up, and that's with voter approval. For the Interest and Sinking Fund, which is for our Debt Service, school buildings are so incredibly expensive that the state allows you to issue a second part of the, of a tax, that's part of the total tax rate. And this is the Interest and Sinking Fund tax rate. This is used to, and this is approved by voter-approved bond election. That is the, the part of the tax rate where the voters approve it, and it's used, and we, the tax rate must be sufficient to make the yearly bond payments for that particular year. And the legal limit is 50 cents, that is the legal limit, period. So right now, we're at 40 cents, hypothetically, if we were to have a bond election, we could only go up 10 cents, period, that's it, because the state would not allow anything higher than that. So I just want to go over this really quick, and this is the, the maintenance and operations part of the tax rate. There's two parts here, there's tier one, and that is the, the basic allotment. In other words, it's important to note this, the school, the state of Texas funds or rewards tax effort. If you want to get funding from the state, you have to impose a tax rate on your citizens, period. And what you're saying, if you want to get the basic allotment of $6,160 per student, you must impose at least the maximum compressed tax rate, okay, whatever that is. That's tier one. And then you have what's called tier two, that's an enrichment program that the state of Texas says, look, if you raise the tax rate, we'll give you additional state funding. And within that tier two, there's two parts, there's tier one, what we call, it's an enrichment program, so you can go up eight pennies, and I know the ladies are going to laugh, because I'm always talking about golden and copper pennies, but anyway, if you go up eight pennies, you generate a yield of almost $100 per student in weighted average daily attendance, okay? Now, for Socorro ISD, and just for us, we can only go up five cents, that's the max. If we go higher than that, we must have to have an election, and the voters must approve that. Now, other districts are different, but that is us. So there's three golden pennies that we haven't captured, so to speak. Now, above that, there's nine copper pennies at a lesser yield, and that makes up the 17 cents that I mentioned earlier. Let's talk about the history for Socorro ISD. So I've always heard that, you know, and I got a call from a gentleman, a fine man, Mr. Lozano, he's a veteran, he called, he said he had talked to trustee Barrera, he was upset about his taxes, and I, and I explained to him, look, we don't have the highest tax rate when you talk about, when you look at this other school districts, you can't compare us to the city, you can't compare us to the county, it's comparing apples to oranges, it's comparing like the Cowboys to the Rockets, right? Compare us to other school districts. And what I explained to this gentleman, and I should thank him for his service, because he's a veteran, so, Mr. Lozano, I thank you for your service, I'm sorry, I didn't tell you then, but anyway. So when you look at it, the maintenance and operations tax rate, ours is 94 cents, we're at least 11 cents below El Paso, Fabens, Clint, Isleta. Now, our maintenance and operations tax rate is 40 cents, so our total tax rate is $1.34, and this is the tax rate that our taxpayers see. They don't see this, they don't see this, they see this, that's what comes out of their tax bill. But it's important to know this, that, you know, the reason why we have a 40 cent tax rate for Interest and Sinking Fund is because of our bond election in 2017. We told the voters we would go up 10 cents, and that's what we did. And that is a function of a growing school district, so I'm sorry, I get lost in this. It's, it's a function of a growing school district, or a district that's reinventing itself, right? You know, revising their schools and so forth. So anyway, this is our tax rate, and I want to inform the board this, of this, because you're going to get questions, you're going to get calls, we're going to go over the notice right now. And I want to explain that, because I promise you that when the notice hits, you might get calls, you might get stopped in church, you might get stopped in the grocery store, and I want to explain this notice so that you can explain that to your constituents as well. So pretty much, our history, so again, we were at $1.27 for many years, we had the bond election, so we went up actually 11 cents, because we went up a little bit on the MNO. And for the last two years, we've gone down about four cents. So the tax rate for Socorro ISD has gone down four cents. And it's important to know this, so our property, our tax rate is going to be based on our certified property values. Now, we haven't received this, and I'm making an assumption, we got our preliminary values, and that's what it is, $12.4 billion. So for the last three years, this shows the decrease from preliminary to certified, which is certified in late July. We can't adopt the tax rate till we have our certified values from the Central Appraisal District. So look how it, you know, went down 2.47, this is a reappraisal year, 2019, it went $439 million, last year was almost $400 million. I have to project a proposed tax rate, we have to publish a tax rate. That doesn't mean that's the tax rate we're going to adopt. The law says this, whatever we publish in June, if the tax rate that we adopt eventually in August is either the same or lower, we don't have to republish. However, at Socorro ISD, we've always republished in August. It costs us a little bit more money, costs us about maybe $1,300 with the times. But we've always done that to make sure that we're transparent, and we inform our taxpayers of what the tax rate is going to be. So I have to make a determination of what I think this is going to be. So as you can see, I've been very conservative, I'm thinking, I've doubled the decrease over last year, again, because of the values of homes that we're seeing right now. And I'm going to show you what we're going to publish, and it's based on this assumption that our values are going to go a lot more lower than before. Okay, so having, having said that, this is the current tax rate, we're at 94 cents for maintenance and operations, we're at 30, almost 40 cents for Interest and Sinking Fund, this is our total tax rate currently. Based on the values that I'm assuming that we're going to have, we're projecting almost a four cent tax rate decrease overall. Now, this is not the tax rate we're going to adopt, we're going to adopt something in August, once we get our certified values. So I'm trying to make sure we adopt a tax rate that is the same or possibly higher than what we'll ask the board to adopt in August. We will see, I won't know that until late July. But as you can see, the total tax rate that we're looking at is $1.34799. So again, this is what we're going to publish, we won't actually adopt it until August, once we get our certified values, and I'm hopeful that the total tax rate will be lower. I'm not sure, but we'll find out. Anyway, so I want to go over the, you know, I, I gave you a copy, and you have at the back, this particular notice, this is the notice that we're going to publish on Thursday. If you get the West Texas Courier, it'll probably come out tomorrow, but it'll be dated Thursday, if not, it should be in the El Paso Times. I'm not going to go through the whole notice, okay? I want to go through a certain section, which is this one right here, and I've kind of, kind of put a little summary here, because that's the rate that taxpayers see, and that's the rate that they're going to call you on. And so, I want to emphasize one thing, the average taxable value of a resident went from $119,000 to $136,000, that's a $17,000 increase, I've never seen it like that. I want everybody to realize this, that this has nothing to do with the school district, that is beyond the control of the Board of Trustees or the administration. This is set by the market, and this is set by the Central Appraisal District. We have a one-month inventory of existing homes, that is driving the prices of homes sky-high. So it's important to realize that we don't control this, we control this. And what we're going to publish is at least a 3.8 cent decrease in the tax rate, the total tax rate for the Socorro Independent School District. Again, I want to emphasize this, because when we publish this, what we do is, you multiply this times this, you get this amount. And when you subtract it against this amount, which is last year's values times last year's tax rate, you're looking at this amount of increase in property taxes rate. Now, this is an estimate, this is an average, some might pay higher, some might pay lower, but it's important to note that we're lowering the tax rate, almost four cents, and in August, it might be higher. I'm hoping it's higher, you know, I'm, I'm making an estimate. But we're going to republish again in August. So I just want to emphasize this to you, because when we publish on Thursday, you might be getting a call. And I want to make sure that we're aware of the fact that the reason why you have it is because of the fact that, it's because of this, this right here. Now, these values will go down a little bit, once we get our certified values in July, and we're going to have a public hearing. and we're going to have a public hearing for the tax rate in August. In the regular board meeting in August, we will have a public hearing to discuss the tax rate. And usually, these numbers are a little bit lower. I remember last year, Mr. Mena was a little concerned because when we did it in June, this showed a little bit of an increase. It showed like about a $20 increase and you were concerned about that. When we published again in August, it actually showed a decrease of about $12, $12. And we gave like a 2.5 cent tax rate decrease. So that is just the, the way it is. So again, look, somebody might ask you, well, why can't you lower the tax rate? You know what, we lower one penny here, we give somebody maybe a $12 tax break and we lose $5 million. You want to lower it five cents, we'll lose $24.5 million. And they get a break of about maybe $60. So again, it's, it's, in, in, when it comes to school districts, it's based on tax effort. It is what it is, so to speak. So again, so what we're going to do is we're publishing the, the notice this Thursday in the El Paso Times and the West Texas Courier. The first time we do it in both papers, it costs a little bit more money, but again, we want to inform our community about that. Again, we do this at least 10 days prior to the public hearing, which is going to be on June 15th. So on June 15th, we are going to adopt the budget. We'll talk in the public hearing about the budget and the proposed tax rate, but we're just going to adopt the budget. In July, in late July, we get our certified property values from the central appraisal district. There's a template that Texas Education Agency has now sent to us. And from there, I have to calculate the maximum compressed rate. And then from there, I add the pennies that we're going to propose. I have to send that to TEA. TA has to review it and they have to say, yes, we're certified that your maximum compressed rate is correct. From there, we publish it and then we present to the board. So that's the timeline. Are there any questions with respect to the budget information or the proposed tax rate that I presented to you?
Any questions?
Well, thank you. So we'll have the public hearing on the 15th and then we'll adopt the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Ressa.
Thank you.
If there are no further business for the board, if there's no further business for the board, the meeting is now adjourned at 6:22.